Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we had to switch back over to the former way of providing sound in council chambers, and so if everybody can just make sure that they speak clearly and enunciate, speak up. I know some of you have quieter voices, so if you could just make sure that you are speaking clearly, we would appreciate that tonight, and up the volume a little bit, if you would.
And James, don't forget to unmute yourself.
Yes, I have to be muted in here because I'm over the speakerphone, but I'm muted on my surface. So as soon as I get the go-ahead from Teresa, we will go ahead and get started.
You ready for roll call? Our recording has started.
Okay. All right. Good evening. We will call the Auburn City Council meeting for July 20th, 2020, to order. The Auburn City Council meeting scheduled for today will be held virtually and telephonically. Per the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the City of Auburn is prohibited from holding an in-person meeting at this time. City of Auburn Resolution Number 5533 designates City of Auburn meeting locations for all council, board, and commission meetings as virtual. All meetings will be held virtually and telephonically until King County enters into Phase Three of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington's phased reopening plan. All right, at this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. And Teresa, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Decorsey?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Giraj?
Here.
Councilmember Malinga?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
All right. Thank you. And Teresa, do we have any agenda modifications for this evening?
We have a revised version of ordinance number 6779 and ordinance number 6780 that have been provided to council.
Thank you. All right, we have no new business this evening. We do have a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance number 6775, public hearing to consider franchise agreement number FRN 20-0002 for Puget Sound Energy. Any interested person is invited to submit written comments voicing approval or disapproval of the proposed franchise agreement, and that would have needed to take place prior to 7:00 p.m. today. Teresa, did we receive any public comments on the hearing?
No, Your Honor, we did not.
All right. Well, I will still officially open the public hearing, and I'll ask the question again. Teresa, did we receive any communications for the public hearing?
No, Your Honor, we did not receive any communications.
Thank you. Does counsel have any questions? All right, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to audience participation. Currently, we are doing virtual participation. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 7:00 p.m. on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Comments can be mailed to City of Auburn, Attention, Shawn Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Fax comments to Attention, Shawn Campbell, City Clerk, at 253-804-3116. And comments can be emailed to scampbell@auburnwa.gov. And counsel, I believe that you have received copies of all comments that were received prior to the 7:00 p.m. cutoff for tonight. There were three. There were three separate public comments tonight, and so please let me or Teresa know if you did not receive them. All right, we have no correspondence. We will move to council ad hoc committee reports. The chair may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council, if any. We have the Finance Ad hoc Committee with Chair Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. As members of the Ad hoc Finance Committee, Councilmember Sterns and I reviewed 125 pages of claims vouchers, including wire transfers for approximately $5.5 million dated July 20th, 2020. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period June 30th, 2020, to July 14th, 2020, for a grand total of approximately $2 million. The committee recommends council approval of the claims and payroll vouchers for the above designated period.
Thank you, council member. All right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Deputy Mayor Decorsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Decorsey, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, thank you. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the June 29th and July 13th, 2020 study sessions, minutes of the July 6th, 2020 regular council meeting, claims vouchers and payroll vouchers as described by Councilmember Baggett. And we have two public works projects, Public Works Project CP 1904, which is an increase of $72,200 in the total maximum authorized contract for a public works contract, and this is for the Auburn Way Preservation Project, Phase Three. These change orders are within the budget and within the contingency provided for the project. And then Public Works Project CP 1925, an increase of $70,000 in the total maximum authorized contract amount, and this is a local street, the local street reconstruction and preservation project, and again, the increase is within the contingency budget within the project.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. If you would please unmute, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. We have no unfinished business, so we will move to ordinances. We have ordinance number 6779 and ordinance amending chapter 18.68 of the Auburn City Code relating to amending the text of Title 18 zoning and zoning map changes. And counsel, as a reminder, you did receive an amended copy of that earlier this afternoon. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move adoption of ordinance number 6779.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance pertains to the regulations for amending the city's zoning codes and the city's zoning map. The proposed changes seek to clarify the procedural steps and the different types of applications, as well as the substantive issues such as the criteria for decision-making. The proposed changes will help to provide guidance to the public, the planning commission, hearing examiner, as well as city staff. The planning commission has reviewed these proposed changes and recommends that the city council approve the changes shown in this ordinance.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions or comments? All right, if you would please unmute, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, next is ordinance number 6780, an ordinance creating chapter 5.24 of the City Code regarding a City of Auburn rental housing policy. And counsel, that was, the amended copy was sent to you earlier this afternoon. Deputy Mayor Decorsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the amended ordinance 6780.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Decorsey?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to implement administrative procedures to carry out the directives within this legislation. The temporary COVID-19 rental enforcement restrictions prohibit landlords, property owners, and property managers from treating any unpaid rent or other associated rental charges where there's non-payment as a result of this pandemic and where this occurred on or after February 29th, 2020. Any attempts to collect or any threats to enforce collection is prohibited. This ordinance does not prohibit any landlord, property owner, or property manager from enforcement actions where a tenant was provided and offered a reasonable repayment plan and has refused or failed to comply. Enforcement restrictions in this ordinance only apply to rental payment amounts during the time that the governor's mandated the emergency proclamation. This new chapter and section of the Auburn City Code will automatically expire and will be repealed with no further council action at such time when no remaining payments are due and/or enforceable where actions could be brought, or one year after the effective date of this ordinance, whichever comes first.
Thank you. Questions or comments from counsel? Councilmember Sterns, are you, I'm looking over here, I'm assuming you're raising your hand on screen?
I am. I cannot find the raise hand button on my display.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Apologize for that. Yeah, I have a recommendation, if that's appropriate. So earlier, I saw a notice or an email from the King County Bar Association that talks about the, this current ordinance that we're voting on, and it said, it's unclear in the language we have right now that the ordinance would apply to people who are living in manufactured homes, and in particular, manufactured housing parks, and that, I mean, obviously, that the governor's proclamation is aimed at covering those, but it wasn't clear that our ordinance actually does that. So I was going to suggest, if we could, to amend the motion to include specifically mobile park landlords, and maybe if Jeff has some language.
So, Councilmember Sterns, if I might, I believe, I could be mistaken, but I believe their concern over including mobile homes was with the full ordinance, and this ordinance as amended is strictly for the temporary COVID-19 rental enforcement, but I just want to confirm.
I'm talking about.
You're aware of that?
I'm talking about just temporary ordinance. Yeah, the concern that the King County Bar Association raised was that our temporary ordinance didn't specifically address mobile park homeowners, which are envisioned, they are referenced, that specific section of the RCW is referenced in the governor's proclamation, and it actually, in the longer version of this that we had last week, there was a subsection out that specifically did not include the RCW section. That's out, but to me, it just felt like it's still unclear, a little bit ambiguous, and so I'd like to see if we could amend that to just include, make sure that it includes mobile home park landlords.
Okay, so City Attorney Hyde, can you comment on that?
I can, first of all, I want to make sure that everybody understands that the language we plugged into the proposed section 5.24.010 was patterned after the governor's proclamation, but we can add, it was not, it wouldn't hurt to have clarification, especially if there's some question about it, to add the words, you know, landlords, property owners, and property managers, including landlords over manufactured parks, or something to that effect, and that could fit probably pretty easily in the fourth line of the text, paragraph eight, if that's what you would like. Is that what the motion to amend is?
Well, there hasn't been a motion yet. I just wanted to get clarification, and then Councilmember Sterns can make that motion if he would like.
All right.
Councilmember Sterns, did you want to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion to add in a mobile home park landlord into the ordinance.
All right. Is there a second? I know that there are some hands raised here to make comments, so I just, raise your hand on the screen if you would like to second Councilmember Stern's motion. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I second that motion.
All right, thank you. And is there discussion on the amendment that Councilmember Sterns has made to the ordinance? Deputy Mayor Decorsey?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when I was going through this and looking at our revised version, I think Councilmember Sterns is correct because it didn't mention anything related to that. And I think Councilmember Baggett probably speaks to this as well, but since we live in a manufactured home park exclusively for seniors, you know, this is probably appropriate. I don't see us having this type of issue, but I know perhaps other parks around the city may experience some difficulties with their landlords, contrary to us who don't experience difficulties with our landlord, but I think it's an appropriate measure to put in just to make sure we're covered.
Okay, thank you. And our Director of Community Development, Jeff Tate, has a comment?
I just wanted to say that I think the appropriate terminology in there is mobile home landlord, right where Dan suggested putting it, which would be right after the word landlord on the fourth line down.
Great. All right, so Councilmember Sterns, you are okay with mobile home landlord?
Yes, I am.
All right. And City Attorney Hyde?
May I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
Before we, because I've heard both mobile home and manufactured homes, was the text of the amendment just mobile home park intention, or was it manufactured homes as well?
I believe you just said mobile home landlord.
Okay.
Which is consistent with the mobile home landlord tenant act.
Then that's, then that clarifies my question.
Excellent. All right. Councilmember Baggett, did you have comment on the amendment? Okay. Are there any other comments on the amendment to add mobile home landlord into the ordinance? If not, if you would unmute, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. The amendment passes, and now on to the original motion. I believe there were a few council members who wanted to speak. Councilmember Baggett, did you wish to speak at this time?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Your Honor. I really wanted to clarify for our listening audience there that this is a complete rewrite from the original ordinance, which, I don't know, I received many, many emails and phone calls regarding this. I'm sure the other council members did as well, but I want to make sure that they understand that this has been completely redone, and the purpose of it is very clear in the new rewrite. So for that benefit, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Thank you.
So Councilmember Baggett, the section 5.24.010 was included in the original ordinance, so this portion remains. What we, what staff had decided today is that with the comments that are coming in, both much in favor of the full ordinance of just cause evictions and some that are against the just cause evictions ordinance that originally was provided to you, that we would make sure that we had the opportunity in place for the COVID language on the outside chance that Governor Inslee does not extend his COVID eviction moratorium, and that there is now time for us to work with some of the opponents and proponents of the original ordinance, and it will be coming back to you at your August 10th study session for additional work, and then if approved or if agreed to that night, it would come back on your August 17th council meeting for final vote. Is that?
But just so that we understand this thing, that this ordinance 6780 as amended is basically a complete rewrite from the original one.
Well, it's not a complete rewrite, Councilmember, because there is some of the language that is still in there, and that is related to the COVID-19 rental enforcement restriction. So everything else has been stripped out, yes, but this portion.
And that's the part that I want to make clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's just semantics. It wasn't a complete rewrite. And I, Councilmember Trout Manuel, did you have comments? I saw your hand up earlier.
No, I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Stern on the last topic that we were talking about, so, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Decorsey, and then Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the mayor's explanation as we go forward, as we have discussed with staff doing the additional research and looking at this again as we, as it comes back to council on August 10th at our study session. So I think, as the mayor said, just to make it clear, we haven't abandoned anything. We are looking at the different bits of information that individuals have sent us, and we just want to make sure we have some good clarity, want to make sure we have the process that we feel is necessary to go forward, and then to add a new section to the Auburn City Code that will be beyond the COVID-19 process. So as we look at this again, this one is basically, as the mayor said, for the COVID-19 issue, and that's why we made the amendment for tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Sterns? And you are muted, Councilmember.
Am I good now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and so I first wanted to say thank you to the mayor for leading on this issue, and to the deputy mayor for your work, too. I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm in favor of, you know, of the original just cause eviction ordinance as it was drafted, and maybe with a couple other things to handle areas where refusal to rent would come in, but I just wanted to say why I'm in favor of that, because I believe that, you know, homeownership and having a house actually is a human right. I also, you know, I'm looking around my neighborhood and looking around Auburn, I can just see how much of a crisis homelessness is for people. And then, you know, when I look at evictions, you can really see that there have been some new studies. The University of Washington just did a study, and it shows that in King and Pierce Counties, eviction rates for Black and Hispanic adults are almost seven times higher than white adults. And so to me, you know, evictions are a civil, in addition to a human rights issue. And as we know, the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, it's only exacerbating, you know, widening the disparities by race and by income. So I'm all for just cause eviction laws. I think they help promote residential stability. They, you know, a person who is evicted has a one in five chance of ending up homeless, so I think it also is an important tool to deal with the homelessness crisis that we're all facing. So I just wanted to express my views, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and look forward to voting on this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from counsel? All right, hearing none. If you would all please unmute, all those in favor of ordinance number 6780 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Thank you. All right, we will now move on, if I can get my screen to open up here, here we go, to mayor and council member reports. At this time, mayor and council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations, and we will begin with Deputy Mayor Decorsey.
He's muted.
Deputy Mayor, you are muted.
Sorry about that. I should know that when you see the little red thing that's not, tells you that you're muted. Thank you, Mayor. Thursday, July 16th, for the first time since February, we had our Growth Management Policy Board meeting, again, virtually, and with the size of that committee, the guests, and others who participate, there's over 50 people that participate in that virtual meeting, so it's quite a session. Real quickly, the main topic, we covered a lot of areas, but the main topic was looking at the regional housing strategy. Puget Sound Regional Council, through their Vision 2050 Plan, is looking at developing this regional strategy as a framework to support the 2023-24, 2024 update of local comprehensive plans. So the work will be done in conjunction with local jurisdictions, and the task going forward are, first of all, to develop a work plan and kind of an introduction to the housing process for deliverables, looking at finalizing the work plan, and then launching a needs assessment that they're calling Housing 101. And there's been quite a few needs assessments done related to affordable housing supply, lack of affordable housing and such. Again, this is working mostly with the jurisdictions, the better to find what most of the jurisdictions are experiencing and what their direct needs are going forward, as it ties into the Vision 2050, and as it ties into our local comprehensive plans. So final strategy is looking at being rolled out sometime in the fall of 2021. So this will be a continuous item that we'll be working on, and we'll get briefings on this as we go forward from PSRC and how they're doing all this. And then secondly, we're holding very frequent South Cities Association, my little notes are here, our South Cities Association Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and we've decided as a caucus that we're going to be meeting every week because issues going forward have really created some strains, as we all know, within the affordable housing community. One of the recommendations that the SCA Caucus is making is to send a letter to Governor Inslee. Inslee related to the extension of the moratorium on evictions. So that letter has been drafted. We have a meeting next week, I believe, next week, our regular Affordable Housing Committee meeting, which we will bring that forward and attempt to get a vote from the entire membership, and then forward that letter to the governor. And I know we've heard, and everyone's heard, the governor is saying, potentially, they're looking at extending the moratorium, but we want a little bit more in the process with that. And hopefully, the letter will help him and his staff have a little more understanding of where more of the Affordable Housing Committee groups are coming from with this and the assistance that's needed from the governor's office. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett. I'm just going to go in alphabetical order tonight, council. I usually try and see where you are on the screen, but every time there's a new speaker, you move around, so I'm just going to go in alphabetical order tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, I attended the Regional Transit Committee. It was a joint meeting with Metro and the Mobility Framework Committee for King County. And basically, we had a couple of interesting announcements. Our general manager for Metro, Rob Gannon, is going to be leaving the RTC, and he's moving to take over the CFO responsibility in Missoula, Montana, which is where I believe he is from. And Terry White, who's the deputy general manager, will take over as the interim general manager for Metro, and should be a very smooth transition because Terry is a very capable individual. Just some highlights about what we talked about at the meeting. The second probably could be the most important, really, is recognition of the two Metro bus operators who died from the COVID-19 virus. So our thoughts go out to their families and their friends. A question came up about the relationship between the, or coordination, if you will, with Sound Transit as well. And Metro is deeply involved with the Sound Transit to make sure that we have compatibility with, you know, all of these service reductions, the budget issues, and they're trying to complement each other's services. So they are working diligently together to make sure that there's no gaps in service and what have you. Also, I just kind of wanted to reiterate a statement that I had made earlier, that they are looking at about a $2.2 billion, that's B as in billions, shortfalls here between now and 2028. And they have several revenue options that they are looking at to try to offset that. However, they're still probably going to be in indefinite dire budget problems between now and then, even though they probably will have some revenue recovery in some areas, not the least of which would be probably a fair box increase as well. The other thing is that Metro relies entirely on the county's projections and the sales tax revenues that flow into the agency, as do many of us, including our own city. So it's very, it's very important that we work together on all of the issues, not to mention the service, especially those areas that require ridership for people going to work and what have you. I did bring up a question as to whether or not Metro was working on a plan in the event of a second wave of this COVID virus. And even though they said they're not working towards any of those kinds of plans at this time, that a prolonged economic recession as a result of that would probably lead to further service reductions and, of course, budgetary problems. So hopefully, they're continuously, continuing to work on their strategic plan along with the Mobility Framework, which deals with a lot of the ridership and the routes that are serviced. And I believe that they are really diligently working together, and now, under the guidance of Terry White as the interim general manager, I think that they will be coming up with solutions for us to review in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I want to report on a Sound Cities Association webinar that I attended on July 10. It was an amazing session. We had, the title of the session was "Racial Equity and Justice." And it was, it was an amazing webinar. The stars of the show were seven local elected officials, people of color, that told their stories and the experience of them and their families, having grown up or moved to this area, and the impact of living in a white majority community as people of color. I really appreciated the stories about how family members moved here and tried to buy homes, and the redlining that occurred with depressed housing crisis in areas, neighborhoods that were populated primarily by people of color, and the legacy of that, and also stories of personal experience as, you know, people of color that had interactions with law enforcement. One of the members talked about his personal experience, and his dad was a police officer. So...
Councilmember Brown, could you speak up, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I would just say that, you know, for many of us that grew up with white privilege, it is important for us to know that some of these things are more difficult for us to see. It's like one of those pictures where the picture is hidden within a picture. And unless we intentionally study and try to understand the experiences, we won't get close to knowing the experience of our fellow citizens, our fellow residents. So I really recommend, if you get the opportunity, to take some training in the area of equity and racial justice, please do that. It's important for us to study that. And thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jayraj. Councilmember Jayraj, we are unable to hear you. Tell you what, how about we'll go to Councilmember Malinga while Councilmember Jayraj, you work on your sound system issues, and I'll come back to you once Councilmember Malinga is finished. Is that all right? Councilmember Malinga?
Your Honor, I don't have anything to report on tonight.
Well, that didn't give Councilmember Jayraj much time. All right. Let's go to Councilmember Troutmanuel.
Yes, I don't have a report, but I would like to touch on something that we have all been hearing about is the COVID and wearing the mask and stuff. Over the weekend, I was gone to a family funeral, but it didn't have to do with the COVID. But when I got back home, I received three phone calls from family members that my sister's son and his whole family have contacted the virus due to one of their young daughters going to spend the night at another family's home. And the girls went to a barbecue, and that's where she contacted. And these two families now are quarantined, and they both came up with positives. My nephew, the father of the young girl, he's the only one that's having some issues, and so we're keeping them in our prayers. One of my sisters, who has some really severe underlying illnesses, she contacted the virus as well. And right now, she's in the hospital. So I just want to make sure that I echo that we need to wash our hands, we need to wear our masks, we need to be very careful on who we are contacting with. My nephew's family caught it just from their daughter going to a barbecue. And so it's very important to please take care of each other and take care of one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutmanuel, and we will keep your family in our prayers for safe recovery. Councilmember Jayraj, do we want to try this again?
Thank you, Your Honor.
There we go.
You're finally back.
Welcome back.
I don't know what happened. Thank you. On July the 8th and July the 17th, I had the pleasure of spending time with our police department. Thanks to Chief O'Neill, I was able to go and see how they performed VNR and the training that they have to go through to get certified. And on the 17th, I was able to spend a whole day with them, learning about weapons and tactical training that they do in our local area. And it was, it was intense. And for me, it got to be nerve wracking without even being a police officer, as a citizen and being part of that tactical training. I put myself into that situation, and it was pretty intense. And that's what they have to go through every time they get a call. I have a lot of respect for our local police department, but I went because it is being a council member and a citizen of Auburn. I wanted to know and feel what they are going through, or else I wouldn't be able to do my job as a council member. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd actually, just if I could cross talk and follow up with James. You know, I had the good fortune to take a multi-league training course with the FBI, the FBI Citizens Academy, and it was absolutely outstanding, and I would highly recommend it to all of my colleagues or anyone on the staff...
Councilmember Sterns, can you speak up?
...for the city to go through that. So that's one thing. On the 13th of July, I did have a chance to sit in on the King County Flood Control District Advisory Commission. The mayor is a permanent member of that, and I had a chance to sit in on the meeting. There are a number of projects that we discussed that were in the capital plan, that are in the works or upcoming. Most of those were on like the Snappalmy River and the Cedar. But there was one, one thing that the flood control staff brought up that was kind of cool, which is on the Green River, and they were going to start working on a fish passage for salmon at the Black River Pump Station, which is further down the Green River, but certainly would, you know, really help, help out with the costs. That, you know, our former dear council member Bill Lozum was really fighting for, which is to get more salmon up to the Green River. So it was really good to hear that. So that's my report on the Flood Control District meeting. The only other thing, I did want to add one thing, which is something, again, something that happened last week, and that was the death of Congressman John Lewis. And I just wanted to say that, you know, his life and his work meant so much to so many. I can't believe it, but I was lucky enough to have worked in the House of Representatives when he was there, and I got to watch him in person. He had so much power, and he had such a spirit. And he was surrounded with love, and that meant so much to me. He tirelessly led our nation on a path towards human and civil rights, and he did it in a spirit of love, and we all owe him a large debt of gratitude. So I'd like to thank him and send condolences and prayers to his family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Yes, there are many that say he was the conscience of Congress, and we pray that that conscience remains in Congress, especially at a time like this. I would like to start out by sending condolences on behalf of the city to the city of Bothell, who lost a police officer in the line of duty last week, Officer Shoup. It is a tragedy when that occurs. And I did send our condolences on behalf of the city last week, council, so that you are aware. They are, as I told them, Bothell Strong. They, if you remember, about three, possibly four years ago, a portion of their downtown burnt. And seeing how the community came together in support, similar to what is occurring this time, they have a strong community. They will, they will make it out of this even stronger, but our thoughts and prayers do go to the city and to the family and friends of Officer Shoup. I also attended the Sound Cities Association Racial Equity and Justice webinar that was on July 10. As I said to the executive director, Deanna Dawson, it was haunting to hear some of the stories that were shared of what had occurred in their lives in regards to racism. And it provides commitment anew to ensuring that things like that do not occur in our city and that now that we know better, we can do and be better, and we are committed to that in our city, as I know all of you are, as well as those who work for the city. And we have much work to do, but we will be in this together, and we will, we will make great strides in that regard. Immediately after that training, I went down to the police station to swear in our newest police officer, Officer Cox. And so he is former military, spent some time in LA, and is very excited about being in Auburn and providing service to this community. So we are excited to have him on board with us now. On Thursday, July 16, we had the next meeting of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, of which I am a board member. And at this meeting, we were finally able to approve a slate of applicants, appointees, pardon me, for the implementation board. And the implementation board will be providing guidance to the governing board. And so all of, all except two appointees were approved. There is still one, no, excuse me, all but one. There is still a need for another King County Councilmember appointee to be named, and so we will work through that process at our next meeting. And now that the implementation board is in place, we can also move forward with the recruitment of an executive director to oversee the regional housing or homelessness authority. On Friday, the 17th, I was invited to meet with Governor Inslee. It was the mayors of Federway, Mayor Farrell, Pacific Mayor Leanne Guyer, Kent Mayor Dana Ralph, and two council members from... Kent Mayor Dana Ralph, and two council members from Federal Way to meet with Governor Inslee to talk about issues within our city, especially surrounding COVID. As we are aware, the numbers are not moving in a positive direction at this time. Governor Inslee did not commit to any specific actions, but did make it very clear, as he has in his press conferences, that if the numbers do not continue, or if the numbers continue to go in the wrong direction, there will have to be some additional steps taken to ensure that we reduce the number of transmissions and those who are catching COVID-19. This is a very serious illness, for some more than others. And so, we are doing everything in Auburn that we can. We have tried to do and advocate and educate as opposed to enforcement on wearing masks. We are putting together campaigns that are more fun in nature to remind everyone that it is critically important that you wear your mask when you are out in public, when you cannot maintain that social distancing. Crowds no larger than 10 people. And that's in, that's in, those counties that are in phase three. So, that went into effect today. King County is in phase two. And so, we are not allowed anything larger than five people, I believe, to, in one gathering. So, it is critical. We want a healthy and vibrant community, realizing that there are economic impacts, negative impacts to our community right now. But your health is incredibly important to us as well. And so, we will continue doing everything that we can to ensure the economic and physical health of those in our city. We are not in need of an executive session tonight. And so, with that, we are adjourned. Council, thank you very much.